It looked like somebody poured out.
Just happened, because I came through this.
Good then.
Okay, I would like to call to order the Town of Elon Board of Alderman Works Session for April 25th, 2022. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance if all who are able will.
Agents to the fore of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will ask the town clerk to please share with us the items on the consent agenda.
In the manner of adjustment, the items on the agenda is Board of Alderman's Meeting Minutes for March 7th, 2022, the Agenda Session Minutes, March 15th, 2022, the Rep. Meeting Minutes, and April 4th, 2022, the Special Meeting Minutes. You've got about 30 minutes on March 28th.
Okay. So we don't have, we'll just include that in the following. Any questions? All right, moving on to our first presentation this evening, that is Boarding Commission's Volunteer Applicants.
Well, so far tonight, we have Wendy Scott. She has submitted her application to the Equality Board. I don't have yet the whole packet like you all do. And you wanted to invite the applicants here to introduce themselves and share their interest in the various boards or commissions. And we were or are expecting at least one other who is Adam.
Right. Wendy, would you like to come up to the podium and just tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in the committee?
Evening, everyone. I recently located to Elon, Burlington, too far down the road. And I was serving as the co-chair of Elon University's Review of Our Biased Response System. And one of the members of their newspaper called to interview me about the Equality Ordinance that you all were considering or that they proposed last year. So that's the first time I heard about it. When Ms. Enoch told me that you all were looking for volunteers for different committees, I figured as a new member of Elon that this would be my way of becoming involved in the town. I have taught law for about 30 years and my primary area of expertise is constitutional law. And so I feel like I could bring some perspective, some knowledge, some history and background to work there. Questions?
We're very privileged to have something like you. We're all qualified. This is really excellent. I'm glad you're looking.
And I, as I said, I'm new to the town and would certainly like to feel helped and whatever you all want.
Thank you.
What I hope is that obviously by you stepping up, showing initiative to volunteer, that will help some more people in the community want to do that. Because obviously, a committee of one is not very effective. But it's time to.
I'll see if I can do some recruited, but I will see. I live over in relatively new subdivision, Cable Square. Just a couple.
So have you moved? You haven't been disappointed to fully embroiled yet, have you?
No. Although I was over there, I used to live near Springwood Park. So I go over there every now and then and walk because it's a beautiful park.
Any other questions for Wendy?
Thank you so much.
I'm going with process of elimination. Are you Adam? So Adam, if you'll just come to the podium, tell us a little bit about you and your interest in the committee. And it looks like you were interested in both or one or the other Committee for Equality and Committee for Sustainability. Is that correct?
That's correct. Apologies for being tardy. There was an accident on Williams. Yeah, so thank God. Pretty tardy, but so well. My name's Adam Shaw. My wife and I, we live over on Forestue. I've lived here about six years. I'm a technical project manager at Cisco. Been at the company for about 14 years now. Veteran, was in the Navy for about nine years. During that period, I was a part of the nickel nuclear power program. I was a surveyor draftsman and I was also a nickel worker for a while. I just, as of May 6th, I went back to graduate school and I will finish my master's degree in piece of complex studies at UNCG. My undergrad is in ethics. I'm very much interested in sustainable development. I was also very interested in how I might be able to contribute with equity. Yes, yes. Most of my work experience, training and education has been predicated on kind of a holistic analysis of problems or challenges. So how you manage those resources, people in diverse perspectives present. So I feel like with, while being a jack of all trades and not necessarily a master none, not saying that I am better than an expert one, but I think my broad experience would be particularly with organization.
Any questions? Just excited that we have some amazing folks here that are willing to volunteer and share their amazing, I said amazing already, but their group expertise with us. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think when I was reading through all of the applicants and the resumes, I was like, we have just such incredible people here in the town of Elon and to utilize the talents that are right here is such, it's such an asset to have in our town. And so we're really excited that we're going to be starting these two new groups. And, you know, for you all to be on them, we of course need to recruit more people. We have a few others who we're going to meet. I think only you all were available to come tonight, but they'll be at a future meeting. And then try to get the ball rolling. But we really wanted you all to know that we aren't ignoring your applications. It's just we want to make sure that we have enough to really have a sustainable committee. And so we thought, well, let's go ahead and start having meetings and the conversations so that, you know, we can get to know you. And now you know us. And so, you know, if you have any questions, you're welcome to reach out to us. Of course, the town staff is welcome, you know, are happy to help you as well. But we definitely want to get these things going. I think it would be nice to get things going over the summer for sure to get the ball rolling.
Say one quick question. Are you leaning one way or the other on which committee you'd like to be on?
I don't necessarily have a preference, but I want to go where I'm needed. Or it might be designated skills that I have to be most beneficial to.
Right, okay. That was my question as well. Obviously, if you had a preference, what would you rather do? Because, you know, obviously, as we slowly get more people to buy, if we ask you to be on one committee, that really wasn't our choice. Would that create an issue for you? That's, that was only my question I had, because I think maybe one of the groups that we get formed quicker than the other. So that's some of the things. I'm glad you're flexible because we need utility players to go in.
And may I say, Wendy did explore both as well. And that hurts too.
I think my expertise might be less sustainable. It's an interest, but.
We really appreciate you both being here. You are welcome to stay for the whole meeting if you know that
I'm interested in.
Your interest and otherwise, you're welcome to go. So it's totally up to you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you very much.
So nice to meet you both.
At least hang out for a little bit. Budget proposal.
You might want to like round up your neighbors. Okay, well, moving on to letter B under Presentations, and that is to review our draft fiscal year 23 budget. I believe that's Mr. Redner.
It would be neat.
Their popcorn with them.
It's not that entertaining.
We have some microwave popcorn.
Sugar free treats.
Okay. So we've been working on budget now since staff's been working on it since December. We met in February for the retreat and I just want to kind of highlight some of what came out of, out of the retreat. And I apologize, so many things on the list. But some of the things that came out of that retreat process, West College Plaza was probably the, I think there was a top starred item on our list, East Haggard Waterline, Williamson Waterline. Starting the concept of the North Williamson Streetscape. We had a roof over the basketball court at Slate Park on that list. And then some of the other items had to do with the land we own up 87. Sidewalk work on Williamson and Haggard. Initial waterline improvements, parking out at Slate Park sidewalks. Streetscape on East Haggard and some public information officers for the PD as well as the town. Since, a little bit before perhaps, but certainly since the retreat, the board expressed an interest in having a, separating the HR position from our finance director and having an HR officer working for the town. We came to realize that, you know, after our audit, that our general fund balance exceeds what our policy suggested should be. We have a policy that should be about 40% of our annual expenditures, current, general funds expenditures currently over 100%. So the board said, let's, let's start working that down a little bit so that we can get it back in line with our policy. And those goals are kind of one-time capital expenses. So it doesn't just get dumped into the general budget, you know, to pay for, you know, pens and paper, things like that. Board had some concerns, the budget committee certainly had some concerns about inflation, how that's affecting our employees, how are we going to address that impact? And we have been the recipients of funding through the Federal America Relief Plan Act, ARPA. That was part of the COVID relief and stimulus pro, COVID relief, not stimulus so much, but. And in addition, the state, the feds gave ARPA money to the state. And under the state budget, they allocated money to a bunch of different communities, including Elon, through their state fiscal recovery support or something like that, SFRS. So we're the recipients of funding from there, which is still ARPA money coming through, through Raleigh. And so we have time limits on when that money needs to be spent. So in the current budget, or the proposed budget, all the milestones, because these are some of the big ticket items that we talked about and how they, how they relate to some of the things that we just went over. North Williamson Waterline, we're estimating that about a $465,000 project to replace that, that line. We're proposing that ARPA funds be used for that. East Haggard Waterline, it's about 2.4 million is our current estimate. We're proposing that we use the allocation from the state to cover that expense. Best College Plaza, we've estimated that to be about a $400,000 project moving forward. That includes the design work as well as construction and start, starting with furnishings. Williamson Streetscape, that's a planning project that was allocated for about $100,000 to bring somebody on board to help with actually that public process, a discussion process of what do we want North Williamson Streetscape to look like? And the HR position that the board had suggested is in the admin budget proposal. So those, those are some of the big items that came directly from the goals that you folks had established through the retreat process. So when people think of budgets, they automatically think of expenditures. What do we spend money on? I like to start on the other side of the ledger with revenues because that doesn't get talked about nearly as much. And you obviously don't have expenditures without the revenues. So since, you know, last year when the census was completed, the feds reported out our 2020 population numbers. My concern has been that we would see essentially a decrease in sales tax revenue coming from the state through the county to us because the county distributes it based on population. And our population percentage of the county dropped with the census from, I think it was about 4.6% down to 3.9%. But on last year, that would have been about, been about $500,000 less in sales tax revenue. State's estimating 3.75% increase in sales tax revenue in the coming year, which puts us around an estimated $3.75 million of sales tax revenue. Our history's always been to budget conservatively because I don't, we never want to be caught if the economy turns suddenly and the sales tax revenue disappears. So I've got in the present revenue budget, 3.4 million, which is a little bit more than what we budgeted in the current year budget. We budgeted 3.3, so that's to the good. Property taxes are other major sources of revenue to fund operations. That comes from our tax rate of .45, which is flat in the current budget or the proposed budget. Due to some depreciation issues and, and lack of new valuation growth in Elon over the last year, we're actually seeing a bit of a decrease in property tax revenues based on the county's estimates from 2.6 plus down to about 2.5. It's a, not a huge amount of reduction, but it's enough that should be, you should keep an eye on it. So West College Plaza, the university has offered to split the cost of that with us. And they would do that through a donation to the town as we move forward. General Fund, every year we have allocated funds from the general fund into our general fund budget, called subsidized the budget, if you will. Last year, we started at $372,000. There was a couple of amendments that brought it up. 700 change. I'm proposing that we, we take 500,000 from general fund, put it into our general fund budget. General fund balance and put it into our budget. In addition, I'm proposing we take a billion dollars out of our fund balance to subsidize or to pay for our capital improvement plan for this coming year. And we'll get into some details of what that all covers in just a minute. We have now completed the purchase of the Travis Creek Pump Station for Gibsonville. If you recall, both communities flow into this pump station. We've been paying Gibsonville for the cost of our sewage that they then sent to Burlington for treatment. They are now going to be paying us for the cost of their sewage, which we will send to Burlington for treatment. It's a swing of about $360,000 of revenue. You'll see in the expenditures that we match it by paying Burlington more than we are today. It's a little bit of a wash, although there is a bit of a markup that we've agreed with Gibsonville that they had on it and that we will have on it. We also have a, as part of the purchasing of the pump station, last year we had a significant increase in our sewer water rates, about 10%. This year, we're proposing another 10% increase. That will put us in a position to maintain our cash balances, our funders like to see that you, you've got money in, in, in the bank account. So we've always, you know, we've gotten up to the point where we are it's four months of cash in the bank. They like to see six months of cash in the bank. Plus, we have debt service that we need to cover nearly 200, about $150,000. So those two things combined lead to another rate increase this year. And then we will see where we are with development, whether that requires an addition. The original proposal was for an additional rate increase in 24, a much smaller one. We've seen some development proposals that may help mitigate that if they, if they go forward. And we've gone out to bid on solid waste contracts. There's a difference of a little bit over $100,000 in the combined solid waste recycling contracts. And so we've posed a rate increase, generates about $140,000 of revenue. Will certainly cover the cost of the contracts. Will also help cover some of the costs that, that the general taxpayer is covering, even if they don't utilize the service, you know, putting out large items or leaves, brush, grass clippings, all that. We've all been paying for that built into our taxes, even if we never use that service. So it helps to, it puts it on, on the solid waste fee to go forward. So under expenditures, I talked about a new HR position, planning for a September hire. New police officer, Kelly had requested to, I'm proposing that we hire one in January, so a six-month position that obviously the following year would become a full-time job or full-year job. Fire department asked for three firefighters. I propose that we do one and a half. And then the following year, we would obviously be paying for two full-time as opposed to one and a half. Department is discontinuing the K-9 program, at least over the next couple of years, see how things work with the K-9 programs in the county. Satisfies our needs or not. We are proposing that we update the downtown plan. What we have essentially has been completed, all the, this, not, not the map, but the actual plan of all the things that we should be doing to bring our downtown, improve our downtown efforts over the first five years. We've done all those. So now it's, where do we go from here? How do we proceed? And changing the map. We have some money in there for the last couple items of the LMO rewrite. Recall, we have contractors' budget right now, consulting budget right now. What that does not include is some of the graphics that would go into the LMO that would demonstrate what it is we're talking about with language. You know, so when you say, ah, we ought to have, you know, no more than 20% open space, window space, blank space on a commercial building that should have pitch roofs or parapets hiding them up, all that kind of architectural language. And here's, here's what we need. Talked about the contracts for solid waste recycling, five-year contract. Initially increased about $100,000 plus annual escalators based on inflation. Personnel, this gets to the cost of living impacts of the inflationary period right now. When I put all this together, we are about 5.7%. And what I was proposing was a cost of living adjustment of 2% for everybody, a 2% bonus for everybody. Since then, inflation has continued to accelerate. You know, we talk about that, what the impacts that might be. I've estimated 10% increase in health insurance costs. Last year, our carrier came in, I think about 15%. We ended up with 6.8%. As I was sitting here this evening before the meeting started, I got an email from our, our broker and Cigna is proposing an 18% increase. We've had some, we have had some experience this year with health insurance that is above the, of the average. So whether we stick with Cigna or change carriers, those, those are things we have to determine moving forward over the next couple of weeks. 15 down to six and a half, 18 down to 10, doesn't seem unreasonable, but we will see. And so that's a number that they change. Over the weekend, there's a, and I didn't put it in here and I should have when I put this together. As you recall, when Pam Soto left as our planning director, we've kept her on, it's kind of a part-time employee, pay just, just wages to help with the LMO process. And I forgot to factor that into the budget. So as, you know, when we come to our next meeting on this, I'll have rearranged some of the numbers. I ended up, we ended up with essentially a surplus. And so I decreased some of the revenues, like fund balance, I took a little bit about it, reduced some of that in a couple of other areas. Then I'll need to put some of that back in in order to cover the cost of that part-time position as we move forward with the LMO. So capital investments, these are the projects that we'll be addressing in the upcoming budget if you approve it. West College Plaza, Williamson Streetscape design work, not construction, but the actual design and deciding what it is we want, what waves to look like. We're putting money aside for the first installment of the West Trolleger sidewalk project. Following year will appropriate the rest of it and then build that project down, West Trolleger, from where the sidewalk currently terminates down toward, I remember, I think goes back, it goes all the way down to the railroad crossing, as I recall. In the upcoming budget, the police department has felt that their cruiser situation is stabilized. They don't need to purchase additional cruisers this coming year. Subsequent years, that will be different. But this coming year, they are okay with the vehicles that they have. Cascade system for the fire department that you heard about, so they can charge their own air tanks. Needed upgrades and repairs to Station 8. There was quite a few listing, quite a few items of site improvements to bestment park, you know, not, not the, not the romantic ones of new facilities and things necessarily, but some drainage improvements and some connections and things like that. Likewise, at Lawrence Slate Park, there's been, this is talked about trying to increase the available parking there. So we've included that. And in addition to some other equipment, Donnie had requested that we consider getting a new leaf truck in the coming budget year. Keeping the old one as a backup because when the old, the one we have, when that breaks down, we're stuck. We don't have anything other than troubles and brooms. And that's not the easiest way to go about picking that kind of material up. So water and sewer expenditures. Talked about the increase expenditure to Burlington. They're proposing a 2% rate hike for customers. That's about $135,000 to us. About half a billion worth of treatment for the flows that we'll be accepting from Gibsonville. Decreased about $270,000 of our cost to Burlington because we were, to Gibsonville, because we were sending them our sewer previously. So those are some of the, the big swings. And I'll be honest, I think I've over budgeted this a little bit. Until all the gallons, gallons kind of flesh out, we're having a real good understanding of where things stand. The other part of this is Burlington's installed some new pumps on areas where they did not have pumps previously or meters. So there's, there's some areas that were not being metered. That will change some of our costs as well. So I want to make sure that we recovered.
Cost to go up?
Yeah.
They never go down, do they?
They were not metering certain areas. So we were, we were, as they, as they come on metering it and we've, we've looked at our new number. As they as they come on metering it and we've we've looked at our new numbers. Previously, we were looking at about a 6% water loss from what was. Meter to what we are billing. That suddenly jumped up to 15 plus percent. Once we now see these new numbers. So I wanted to make sure that we had adequate revenue to cover those additional costs of Arlington. So summary, tax rate remains at 45. The the budget includes. $800,000 of new revenue for the fund balance. The municipal general fund expenditures are about 9.5 billion, which was up from. Such a 8 million. And expenditures from our enterprise accounts are about 8.4, which is up from 6.5 in the in the current fiscal year. Now, that gives us a budget of 18.1 versus 15.1 in the current year. Would keep in mind that we've got over $3 million of funding, outside funding for the state. No government that we're we're, we have to budget for as well as some other increased revenue. So. Sounds really bad. It's 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 not nearly as bad as what it what it seems. So. That I think this budget will. You know, there's some things to think about as as you know, positions become funded for a full year. Funded for Colas in the subsequent years and merit increase and all that kind of thing. Those costs continue to go go up. As we, at some point, when our general fund balance is down where we want it. And we start funding some of those capital acquisitions through our general fund revenues. Again, that that we will have to add that back in over time. So it it's not, it's not 100% risk free. And we are anticipating some additional growth that will help as we move forward. I think we've tried to, I think we've achieving a number of the goals that were laid out for us. But I do want you right, you know, we are looking at, you know, future increases of spending when. So those outside revenues or the surplus revenues. Start to dwindle.
Real quick. So so at the bottom line for a resident of Elon. Not going to see a real increase, or they might have a real increase of their tax rate just because of the value of their house.
And or the county's tax rate.
But the the rate doesn't go, but their water bills are definitely going.
Their solid waste fees are definitely going up.
That's all in one, right?
Same bill, yeah.
Are they gonna see that increase happen? Is that in July? So is there any way, I know we had talked about just messaging and how we were going to get that message out. Is there any way to say, yeah, these are going up, but at least your property tax. From us is not, I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out how to lessen the blow a little bit.
Two things, the the May 1st newsletter newsletters will be going out. Next week, that has an article in it about some of these rate increases. I haven't said we're not increasing taxes because I don't know what comes out of the budget process. We are also planning on doing a June 1st. Small newsletter largely to. Bring people up to speed on on the transition from two vendors for solid waste recycling to a single vendor for solid waste recycling. What happens to the extra containers that you don't need anymore? When are they going to be picked up? So all that kind of education as well as information about this. This is the day you need to take your old public container out to the curb because they're going to be coming through, picking it up. This is when you'll be getting a new one from GFL, that kind of information. And yes, we can certainly. We will have a good idea what the budget looks like. For the deadline to get that out. So we can certainly. Include some of that information as well.
Because the values of people's houses are definitely. So let's say the tech.
Well, there, are they doing the reevaluation this year or next year?
They are in the process of doing it now.
So it won't be until next year.
Correct.
Tax changes.
So next year, you you will actually see two budgets from me. One is the proposed, one is a zero revenue increase budget. So not coming in, oh, and we're at 45 cents still because our valuation may have increased 20%. Which means our budget would increase 20%, you know, revenues would increase. It would actually be, if we did not do any increase to property tax spending. Here's what the new mill rate would be, and it'd be a drop from that 45 presumably. And then whatever the proposed budget is, and whether that relies on a property tax increase or not. But instead of. 40, 40 cents, we're going to come in at 41, whatever it is. You know, that if that's how it pans out.
That's next year.
That's FY 24.
Yeah. So so Rich, one question, I think we talked about this last year, but. What would you say the percentage of our revenue comes from? Take aside the the newfound money, man. Our revenue is basically what 60% sales tax, 40%. Property tax revenue.
Didn't you have that in something?
Probably, yeah. Stop sharing for a moment so I get back to my other screens.
While you're searching, I'll just. Stephanie said with the information on the newsletter. Something to a degree with, if we could add in there a myth, because I know when we raised the water rates recently. You know, neighbors are like, you're raising them to create sidewalks for the university. To explain like the myth that it is an, so the. Money for water and sewer is not going to pay for your position or to build sidewalks. Because I think that's a misconception that that is seeing that it's. Trying to make money off of it when it's not.
I think.
Pays for itself.
There definitely needs to be just general education around the fact that water and sewer has to be. Well, I'm not sure it is, yeah, water and sewer has to be self sustainable.
Yes.
It can't, it can't be from taxes, it can be from anything else other than water and sewer fees. So when Burlington's rates go up, ours have to go up. When we have debt service on water and sewer, we have to pay for those. So I think that 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 really needs to be the education. It has nothing to do with Elon University, they pay their rate just the same way that we pay our rate. And I think that 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 should be really the key message is this is why this happens. This is, you know. You know, we we aren't raising, well, the plan is to not raise taxes because we anticipate these issues. But I think that that's important because people are going to ask things, even if they're not accusatory. They're going to ask things about, well, why, why aren't we using that money to build sidewalks? Or why aren't we using that money to put in a new park when we can't?
Or to offset the.
Right.
Yeah, legally, right, legally, we cannot, they have to be a self sustaining fund.
And and we are using some of these outside revenues to build sidewalks.
Right.
So to answer your question, Randy, our general fund budget has a revenue line of about 9.5 million dollars. I'm sorry, Monty, 3.4 of that is sales tax. So not quite a third. When, so so our our. Our our property tax revenue is about 2.6, a little bit less than 2.6. And our 2.54. And and by the way, when I got here in January of 20, we were doing that budget. We were using a 2.6 value for property tax revenue, 2.7 for sales tax. We're now using a bit less than 2.6 for property tax and 3.4 for sales tax. So it is, it it. It's grown as a portion of our revenue budget. So we're more reliant on sales tax now than we were two years ago. It was there.
Actually, that's something I I wasn't aware of until I got aboard, how how that really works out. I mean, we all pay property taxes, nobody wants to pay more, but. Revenue is from sales tax that we get based on our census. Back to the census changed, it was kind of still surprising how.
Yeah.
How either they were wrong 10 years ago.
Or maybe we just didn't have residents.
Well, and remember when, remember when the census is is targeted, is April 1st. You know. We had pandemic was, you know, we we were, you know, offices were shut down. All the students were gone from early in March, which meant that those that lived. In the neighborhoods as opposed to on campus weren't necessarily here to do the census. Do they get counted at home instead of can it be counted here? Quite possibly. So, you know, we we've taken, we've taken a hit on that as have an awful lot of college towns around the country. It's not just us. This is a common refrain from college towns that. Getting hit.
I think too, there was quite a bit of misinformation around the census as well. Do it, don't do it, this is why you should, this is why you shouldn't. Um, versus it being a civic duty similar to voting. So that's unfortunate.
The timing was was bad, I mean, really, just with everything going on in the. Pandemic just couldn't have been worse timing and we gotta. Being a college town kind of got the brunt of it more so than.
It's an election year, right?
When it was election year.
Yeah, so at least 10 years from now, it won't be an election year.
And as you recall, they ended up shutting down. The the counting and the and the the certification process early. They didn't have as much time to go out and verify some of these numbers. And so now they're using estimates, oh, that's a vacant house in Elon that has 2.3 people living in it. No, that's a vacant house in Elon that normally has four or five students living in it. So we, you know, we might, you know, in each of these cases, we might have lost one or two, depending on how they counter it. So it's a lot went into it and. We, you know, we could challenge the process, we can't challenge the numbers. So it's it's almost, you know, why, why bother?
The other side of it is, is that you take a conservative approach. To the funding levels.
Right.
And so when you look at aftermaths of of fiscal years, sometimes there's additional funds because more money did come in.
Exactly. And then that's, in in essence, that's what we use on an annual basis to kind of subsidize the general fund budget.
Yeah.
Following year. But quite honestly, with the sales tax increases we've seen since 2020. Seeing 15% increase in sales tax revenues for those two years, month after month after month. And our fund balance just ballooned because of that.
I remember when we did our our budget. In 2020, we had to about face completely. And we really knocked down our projections on. Sales sales tax, and we we were shocked how much that we that we end up getting.
It was, yeah, the the best, at the time, the best information we had from those who project these things. Essentially as well, we think we're going to see about a 20% fall off in sales tax revenues over the next several months. Was as much as 50% off by by December. Saw a decrease in March's totals, April's totals. They broke even by a couple percent. We were 12 to 15% up every single month. It was it was astounding.
And we think that that's because people were shopping online versus traveling outside of the county to shop.
Yes, they were not going to Friendly Center in Greensboro to go do their shopping. They were staying home. And and so and then we charged sales tax on those online sales in North Carolina. And then and the state knows what zip code that Kate, that sale. Literally want to. Sends it to the county, we got our share. So it was an amazing thing. I don't, and and towns all over the state saw that increase. Suspect there's some towns that didn't, perhaps those were that were heavily reliant. Again, it's done on the county level, so those are where our counties that are heavily reliant on retail sales. They've actually seen a decrease. This not people weren't traveling there to do shopping to spend sales tax revenue there.
It's good we are being conservative with this. I'm not sure we know what the. Inflation rate as we're seeing it right now, what kind of impact that's going to have.
Yeah. Like I said, the last number I saw was 8%. And this was up, this was 5.7% when I was starting to put all this together in February. So it's, it has not gotten any easier.
Still spend, tend to spend money now, looking at restaurants, you go out as a nation.
Well, the other part of it is the employment situation too, it's staff. It's going to be, are we going to be keeping up? And I know the government had government levels versus like private, there may be some differentials, but. You know, you seem to try your best to get close, but you know, that's what worries me, so.
And and municipalities all over the state are raising raising rates or raising wages. Last late summer, I think. Burlington did it for their police, but didn't like it across the board, 6% pay raise for everybody. They're now looking at a significant pay raise across the board for all their rest of all the rest of their employees. Other communities are doing the same thing. We have limited capacity to compete with that kind of funding. As I said, our, I think we saw a million dollars of new valuation last year. We actually, we're actually projecting a decrease in our sales tax or our property tax revenues. Not many towns do that. And so it's, you know, it makes it tough that we can't say, all right, let's, let's let's do an 8% increase for cola.
This property tax dip is not, is not something that's going to be happening year after year, in your expectation or your ideas.
Um. The best I can figure out is is we had very little property tax growth this past year. And we actually saw a decrease from the county, which tells me that, you know, that's depreciation on. Certain types of, you know, commercial properties that they do, and even residential properties is that they get older. They could, they could decline in value. Now, we're seeing things increase in value tremendously. Yeah, they don't change values based on sales until they do a revale. So the overall decrease that we've seen this past year. Now is done is is going to be a tremendous boost to our overall valuation.
But if we see this as a blip is one possible option to look at. Making more out of that reserve fund for one year. With the idea, and I know it's it's difficult to think that way, but but projecting that increase so that. Maybe we could sustain a little bit higher of a pay raise or something, I'm just trying to think about that. If we can, if we have some level of confidence in in the future. Which is always the tough one.
Well, I think on the slide to it, it shows the 2% cola, they're getting. A 2% bonus one time, which wouldn't drag or carry on to this year. But then I. Who'd have 5% merit?
No, we we would put it back to one to three.
One to three, and then longevity. So I mean, it still will hit potentially around that, so I could hit around the eight or nine percent increase.
Seven, depending where they are, yeah. And 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 so, you know, so. Yeah, so there are those opportunities. Many of which are there today, one is the 0 to 3% merit. We have an annual longevity bonus for employees that depend on how long they've been here, could be as much as 4%. So that's still there. You could argue that, you know, they have gotten that anyway and gained on inflation. And now they need that to break even with inflation. I mean, it's not an ideal situation to say, you know, we're gonna, we're not matching the cost of cost. we're not matching the cost of, cost of living increases. It's a, it's a tremendous.
We keep an eye on that as to just, you know, keep, you know, because I, and I know in a small town like this, smaller town, you know, there is a sense of, there can be a sense of loyalty or people or to, to work in a place like this, but, but we, I, I just hope we keep an eye to that.
I do, because that's, that is, that's one of my worries is that wow, I can, I can go, you know, to another town that's ten minutes away and get a five thousand dollar raise. You know, and that may be, that may be true. And part of my analysis of it is, yeah, you, you can go to a town that's about the same size we are, and they've got twice the valuation we have. Which means that that same mill rate is generating twice the amount of money that, that we can.
They're paying for their full healthcare.
Most, most of them aren't these days for employees, but you know. It's a, it's an extremely tough market out there and we, we have some handicaps in how we address that. We don't have we don't, we can't plan on significant growth year after year after year to cover that cost of living increase for, for personnel costs or the insurance increases that, you know, it, it grows and becomes a larger part of our, our budget based, at least, at least our property text related budget. Sales tax keep increasing. That helps, but puts us in a worse situation for when sales tax increases disappear.
Since this is my first go around with the budget, I'm assuming that staff is used to saying, I want this and getting in return something that they didn't quite ask for. I, I'm sure that that's part of the process and.
Staff being department head, you mean, in their budget?
Like when they ask for two officers, they get one, one officer or half an officer.
That's probably a fair statement, yeah.
Okay. And, and so, but I mean, you guys have been working on this now for months. Yeah, and I know you're putting a lot of effort into making this as fair as you can, but this has been really helpful.
You know, I, I will say that, that if, if, if the board is looking at increasing wages. We could do that. I'd be looking where, where we're then cinching the belt elsewhere. Not to say, oh, let's just add a hundred thousand dollars to the budget so we can give, give a higher cola. That's the direction of the board is, is find some money so that we can do that. That's what, that's what I would do, but you'd see impacts elsewhere in that budget.
Inflation right now is, is about what it was when I started working for, I work right now forty years ago. You're not going to make it up this year. I mean, how many, how many businesses are going to be able to pay or increase the salary for their folks to keep up with inflation? I mean, they can't. I mean, I think in my personal opinion, just in my own sense, I think this is a very equitable level for our, our staff. I mean, everybody wants to get paid a whole lot more, but I think it's, it's unrealistic for a business to think, you know, in a year like this, which is very unusual, to be able to cover inflation totally. I just, I mean, you can say, well, that's not fair. I'm, I'm getting a raise, but I'm, I'm losing money. I mean, that happens with health insurance. It happens with other things and we all have been, you know, have been impacted by that. I personally think we've done a good job in trying to compensate our employees in a reasonable manner, albeit probably not enough to, to cover inflation. I, I know I'm probably not going to get enough to cover inflation either, but and I understand the difference in wage earner and how much they make, or I mean, I, I get that part of it too, but I think it's, it's unrealistic to think that businesses across the country are going to give their employees eight percent.
Do we have the opportunity that if there's a surplus in the current fiscal year to do a bonus out of that? Versus some sort of budget amendment?
You mean like a year end budget amendment to do a bonus? Assuming the, the funds are available to us, yeah.
I had a different personnel question and obviously you've been saving us money by wearing multiple hats, but I didn't, if I've missed something, I apologize. Are we looking at having the finance director position filled during this fiscal year or are you going to continue to, to do this? I mean, I just didn't see it budgeted and I, I, it's gotta be a lot. I thought I looked through this whole thing. I promise I did.
Finance is not a separate department. No, it's certainly funded. We've gone through two advertising rounds. I did something that I don't appreciate when others do it and I hesitated to do it, but I tried it anyway to reach out to somebody specifically to ask them why, which they did. But then we went to schedule the interview. They, they decided not to. So I've, since, since advertised our third time. I think it's been out a week right now.
I believe there are eight finance director roles open across the state right now. So it is have a very hard time.
So, you know, it, it is certainly in there and I would love to have somebody on board by the end of the fiscal year. I, you know, I can't guarantee that.
As a general assessment though, based upon what we talked about as some of our goals at the retreat, you've done a pretty good job of getting us some good accomplishments. And we all knew going into this that we were putting our money under the ground. And we all said that. We said, it's not going to be very public to see a fixed water line. But we know that it's important. We know that this is going to make a huge difference down the road. And so my sense is, is that we've got to continue to work with our vision and just say, and, and, and if we're getting a feeling that we've done what we can do, then we need to move forward.
And, and you bring up a good point on, on this, this ARPA money and the state money that we're getting. There are some real restrictions that we can use that money for. The federal government restricted it. And then state of North Carolina restricts it even more. Federal government says, oh, you can spend this on a local broadband and the federal and the state says, but towns can't spend it on broadband. So, um, so we've, you know, we've, we've gone in that direction and all right. Sewer and water is the capital expenditure that is open to us. And that's why we're proposing to use these funds for utility improvements and I mean, the improvements are needed. It's not just because we have the money, we're going to go spend it. The, the East Haggard Water Line is increasing size, which will increase the capacity at the far end of East Haggard. You know, that's an area that could see additional development. North Williamson, that's a replacement. It doesn't necessarily increase capacity, but it's a line that needs to be replaced. And if we're going to rebuild North Williamson streetscape, we want to make sure everything underground is done first. So it's, you know, it, it's, it's planning for the future in some cases. And it's addressing certain civic issues and, and no needs today.
Maybe our public works guys won't be up to their necks in water all the time too.
You know, with the new line, you're not going to have as many leaks on East Haggard that, that they deal with on a regular basis.
These hangers specifically. When I first got elected, I think it's a million dollars to do it. Now it's almost doubled. So like that can has been kicked and now that we do have that ARPA, my thing is a smart move on all of us to, to say, let's do this. We just talked about inflation. One thing that I was just going to ask the board, because it was, you know, Mark and I discussed that we're on the budget committee. We did an increase on that solid waste that, that was a big increases basically. Right now I think we're charging nine dollars as a tail. And we just decided on, I guess, settled to, to propose five dollars across the board. So that's sixty dollars to a household a year now. People's money doing it. We're, we're going to be spending still sixteen point, like sixteen dollars and thirty nine cents or something to, to do this. So we're still not covering that cost. I would just like to hear everybody else's thoughts on. How do you feel about that? Because that is something, you know, it's going to go on that water bill. So on top of that increased water bill, we're going to see that increase. So we're going to hear some residents talk, talking about.
I think you have to look at it from a standpoint of do you want to increase it enough now to cover the cost? Or do you want to increase it and increase it and increase it? Because in our contract, it goes up every year. So do you want to increase it every year? And then we have to hear about it every single year? Or like for me, I'm like, every time stamps go up, I am like, why don't they just make it a dollar? Trying out loud, you know, it's going to be a dollar eventually. You know, when they went from like, what a like forty five cents to forty six cents, I'm going to just make it an even fifty. You know, I'm like, so we're already increasing it, so I don't want to have a vote unfortunately, but I really felt like we should increase it to cover the cost of those services. Otherwise, we're going to be doing this every year. The demand.
But we did jump it up quite a bit with that one, so.
But that's because our contract went up so much too.
We were paying before our contract went up. How much? We were charging nine.
We're charging nine, right. And we were, I think it was thirteen, yeah.
So that still was four dollars difference. And now we're cutting it down to two dollar difference of it. It's tough, man. Like I don't, and then I go back to, I think it might have been the first time in the twenty twenty budget. Proposed tax rate increase of a cent and that would bring us sixty thousand dollars. Cent increase. You know, where, where, where do we stand? Where do we go with it? I know it's tough, but I feel like our residents see regardless of where everybody's at, but when we had the snow, like they saw how well did that with this new leaf truck coming in and how well we pick up brush and we move stuff, it's going to be something you can see where your money is going opposed to raising taxes, not being sexy and doing things underground, although we can't spend taxes like that. But it was, it was a tough decision for, for, for me to think that, right? It's only, people are already struggling and now we're going to hit them with. Because I can afford sixty dollars after a year, doesn't mean my neighbor can't.
So to answer your question, I, and I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but to me, having been in the communication industry and public relations for twenty some years, it's all about the message. It's about getting that, and I know that we're working on that, but even if we if you look on our town website, there's the big red bold thing that's going on right now. I mean, to me, we, we have to get that message out that we're already supplementing the cost of this by, by three dot, with three dollars right now. Three to four dollars. We're going to continue to supplement it. That would be one bullet point. You know, the next bullet point would be recycling has gone up five, six hundred percent across the nation. The next bullet point would be our, you know, water and sewage has gone up from Burlington. So I literally like listing these bullet points. We understand your frustration. Here's what we're facing. We're supplementing it by this, we're supplementing it by this, we're doing. So it just, to me, tho- those are the type of things that are going to save, hope, hopefully save the phones from ringing off the hooks and emails from coming in by having, I, I know the newsletter, but there's a lot of folks that don't look at the newsletter. So if we have that right on the front page of the, of it, you know, as big and bold as we can do. Because I really don't feel like, I feel like y'all have done the best that you can do. I mean, the prices are going up. There's, it doesn't sound like we have a lot of options here. So we just have to communicate the message that we really are trying to do the best that we can for them. These are the issues that we have been faced with and we have been supplementing the cost for, for a long time.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't. I, I look at, like, we, we went back with the, the numbers I gave you on the solid waste rates going back two thousand twelve, was it two thousand fourteen, something?
What it was. Race at two thousand eighteen or nineteen.
I went back, I went back three raises anyway. So it's, you know, we've incrementally increased over the years. We have gone up every couple of years. This one comes closer to matching this major increase that we're hat, we're experiencing. That does get us closer to paying for the containers anyway. You know, we're still, we're still paying out of our, our tax rate, our budget. Yard waste collection, collection, disposal of both of those. Because when you see, you know, you see a truck come by and it gets picked up, you see that cost. What you don't see is when that truck of leaves goes and dumps, you know, it's another seventy five dollars per truckload that, that, that we, we pay in our budget. All the furniture gets hauled away. There's that disposal cost as well. So it's, I mean, it's not inexpensive to take care of garbage.
That's a really good point. I think transparency is really, and it doesn't have to be, there's a fine line. Someone doesn't want to read a book on it, but you know, bullet points are key. But explaining that, because I mean, folks aren't seeing that on a day to day basis. Like we're seeing it when we go through the process and it may sound like, oh, we're sticking to the citizen and it really is not that way. I mean, citizens, we're all citizens too. I mean, we prefer not to have that, but I think you, that's part of the cost of, of what we're having to do, but explaining the reasons behind it are perfect and people still will disagree sometimes, but at least we're being transparent with that. Smoking mirrors, which we're not anyway, but at least that would be out there for folks to look at.
Yeah, and I, I agree with what you said, Steph. I think many times we think about utilities, but how many of us hesitate to cancel our cable or internet bill or phone bills and, and we see those constantly go up. But we're able to pay those and, and we make adjustments. And I think, I think we've come to a point where people have to realize this is utility that has to be done. Yeah, we can leave all the trash out there and pick it up once a month. But that's degrades your property values. It makes your community less safe and friendly. And I think as long as people know, this is not a profit center. We're not, we're not increasing those rates to make profits so we can hire new police officers or fire department staff. It's, it's to cover those costs that unfortunately we've experienced from Burlington. Their costs go up. Same thing with our vendor for trash pickup. The landfill rates have gone up. So I mean, I think it's, you're right. We have to do a better job of educating, not just increase the rates without any, any type of explanation. So in this case, we're just losing less.
And, you know, the whole issue with the Travis Creek pump station. That's a hard one. Well, why are we buying this if we're going to increase our cost of Berlin to get rid of the, the sewerage? And the reason we bought it was to open up additional land for future growth for Elon. So we get more, more value built into our, our local economy. We get, you know, whether it's new residents, new homes, new businesses, whatever it may be.
Well, it's an investment, right? You know, that, that's what that was. Because otherwise, everyone talks about, we need to expand the tax base of the town of Elon. This was our investment, not a reality, because if we don't, or Elon becomes Gibsonville. Essentially, it could have. And this solidified that this is Elon. This is Gibsonville. We've made this agreement. So I, I think that we probably just need to make sure that our message reiterates that, that it's an investment.
And since we took those steps, we've seen two new subdivisions approved. One of which unfortunately was purchased and back into farmland or something. But, so we have one approved. Yet we're having ongoing, we have an application for another one. Kind of a mixed use project, different types of housing plus commercial business space. And we've had conversations with another subdivision. So, you know, there are impacts. There are capacities that we created by doing that that will provide. That will provide us benefits long after the debt on the pump station is paid. So with that debt service is paid, then you know, we're still getting that new revenue. The property taxes uh, forever, so. It's an investment and we're seeing some some benefits of that investment already. What, you know, just keep working on.
And I don't have any anything new to add. I just I would echo what other people said. I, my sense is is that we're all kind of. This has always been that that part of the struggle of of being an Elon in the sense you were a purchaser and not the seller. But I I've been on the other hand. We've turned out pretty well. I think if you look at the overall cost, being an Elon, okay. Talking about that compared to to other tax bases and other towns and that kind of stuff too, so. Okay, well, thank you.
Mary, I want to thank Quinn and Mark and Rich for working on this. It was a. Asking.
Stick without a finance director. Oh, you say here's your budget, Rich.
But I appreciate the work. Rich was the heavy lifter.
Any other comments, questions?
You know, if uh, Phyllis has filed for that grant. Basketball court.
I don't know.
That's, I don't think that's necessarily.
They have that grant that had the.
Children's. Bike bike lane, yeah. I know they've done some work on it. I think they're waiting to to finish it up.
Waiting on it to get paved.
Okay.
All the lamps and stuff are already sitting like over to the side, but there's delay in pavement.
Watching.
I did have one quick question because this is my first budget, so I'm sorry. This is really fundamental. Looked under the general fund and enlisted Board of Aldermen.
Yep.
The two hundred and six thousand dollars, what what is that? Uh, I I know I should know, I know I should know. I just didn't know what it. Okay, because I was like, what are we doing?
That's not happening.
It's the clerk's salary, correct?
Yeah, the clerk has included under.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I just, I wanted to make sure it was clear that it wasn't wasn't us. What wasn't us.
That's a portion of it.
And and there's a lot of, a lot of uh, memberships like the. Probably giving us palaces comes out of there and all that kind of stuff. Townwide issues get placed in that budget as opposed to my membership and I CMA comes out of my budget, you know, admin budget kind of thing.
They could change to council.
Next year. Or maybe by the time it gets approved.
That's right.
Have to go through, change everything.
Any other?
So then the next step is. Your own this.
Uh.
You said you're still gonna, you have to.
I I I have to make some corrections for the planning, which will be expenditure neutral. I mean, the the budget numbers won't change. Uh, I think I've got enough room that that I. The way I had it, the when I I got through it all, there was a little bit of a surplus. So I I reduced some numbers to to make that surplus, you know, go away. So what I'll do is I'll reverse those changes and then apply that toward uh, this planning account, so.
And I guess I would pitch to look shop around for insurance, maybe fifteen percent increases.
We've, that's, that's from Cigna. We have two other uh, companies that are interested in in looking, giving us quotes. And uh, the League of Municipalities also has a cooperative insurance program. That, and so I'm, now that I've got some information that that they've asked for, then I can provide them, we can get a quote from them as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rich.
Lazing ride along.
I mean, do you, do you want the hearing in that first meeting in May, or do you want to do it for your main workshop meeting?
I think that the benefit of having. The um, public hearing during the first meeting is that when you send out that June newsletter. We already have an approved budget.
Well, the vote won't be till after the June newsletter.
Oh, regardless.
Well, it's typically done at the meeting in June. And the other is.
Have to be.
No, you.
Could we not vote for it during the May work session?
Um.
No, because it's a work session.
It's a work session and depending on what happens with health coverage.
Okay.
I may not have, I may not have final numbers yet. Knowing that if we needed to, you know, amend the budget, but. That was a bad taste in my mouth. I'd rather the budget rate.
Yeah, I would say, what do you all think? I feel like I'd rather see the final version of the budget at the next meeting and then have the public hearing. At the work session, but do you all feel otherwise?
At least as final as I could make, I may not have healthcare.
I don't want Rich to feel rushed, obviously, you you try to do a lot of things. And I understand your urgency to want to get done.
No, that actually pushes it back.
Yeah, I would, I would prefer to push it back.
Yeah, me too.
So the hearing or workshop at at May, so which, okay.
Does that allow you in the top to make any changes or adjustments?
Yeah.
Let's get it right.
Especially since you're having to carry so much of a load.
Now we're good to move on.
Yes.
All right, we will now open up the public comment section of the meeting, so this is an opportunity for the public to speak on any non-agenda item for up to three minutes. We will now open the public hearing, meeting comments. Any comments online? Hey, we will close the public comment section. That was our most quiet public comment section yet in twenty twenty two, I think. Um, okay, moving on, proclamations. Um, so we have pro- proclamations on our agenda for May as Mental Health Month. Public Service Employees Week, Professional Municipal Clerks Week, National Police Week, National Public Works Week. And Economic Development Week. Any comments or questions about those proclamations?
Just wondering about mental health has the whole month and everyone else like.
National Health Observance and everyone has mental health.
It's it's how they package.
Or lack thereof.
We all have mental health. We don't all have mental illness.
I I think um, all the public employees didn't dare ask for the whole month.
They get to work the whole month.
There you go. We give you all the whole month of work for your week.
And we certainly appreciate.
It seems to me that there there was something for the fire department in the same month, or is it different? It's October.
As is planning.
Okay, that must be what I'm thinking. Any questions? All right, I think we'll move this to the consent agenda. Next up is a public hearing, consider form of government style for governing body. This is our. Um, public hearing related to the change of Board of Aldermen to Town Council.
Any? Um, basically, all you're doing is holding the public hearing. You've already had your discussion. We allowed time for the public to speak. The A on A against that change. It's a, it's just a procedural process that we have to, that you all have to go to in order to adopt the ordinance in next month. Me, uh, excuse me, at your next regular meeting, May soon.
Okay, we will open up that public hearing. Are any members of the public here in the room who would like to share any thoughts on changing our form of government from Board of Aldermen to Town Council?
Fabulous idea. I've not heard of Town of Alderman. Very, very long time.
So since we have some new people in the room, I'll just give a little bit of background. So we talked about the fact that when we run for the Board of Aldermen, no one knows what Board of Aldermen does or is. Of course, you might, in your experience working in law, even so, we always. Town camp, council, right? It's very antiquated. No one knows what we do, so we thought that really in. For real transparency as to what it is that we do, that it made the most sense to kind of modernize it, go to Town Council. We only have the option of three different choices. We can be the Board of Commissioners, which was what the county uses, the Board of Aldermen and Town Council. And so we really felt for city, but we're not a city. Um, so that was what we adopted for.
I want Diane to get into the vault, get out the.
Nineteen sixty, whatever.
Final note, when uh, when they, when they had the, when they had the conversation to become old. But remember, I know you did that, so it was just funny that. It didn't really seem like it was that big of a deal to them. I guess they didn't want to be called commissioners anymore, but they didn't want to be called a council at that time, but.
Yeah.
But I'm glad we are, so.
And 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 because it's just a name change, this is a charter amendment that you folks can approve. Some charter amendments, we actually have to go to the state legislature for approval. If we were to be, if we would say we want to be the city of Elon, so the town of Elon, I think that would have to go to the state legislature, but.
Our public would show up if we wanted to change it to a city, because the one thing we always hear is they love our small town feel. Or not a city. They let us know that.
Elon City Limits.
Yeah, they do. All of them.
So without a city limit.
Oh, wow.
You realize that the word town is not based on the size, the word city is not based on the size.
Really, only in North Carolina. Ohio, it is. It's village, town. Something else and city.
It's based on size.
So maybe we could go to be a metropolis.
Oh, we're the metropolis of Elon. Okay. We will close the public hearing. Moving on to new business, add the law on tax advertisement. Get us some background on that, interim financial.
If you'd like, uh, this has to do with the advertising tax liens. So folks who have not paid their property tax that were due in. Is what do it twenty one, do you know, last year, last year. So people have not paid their property taxes from last year. Is this ability to to move forward with recording the liens on their on town, on their tax delinquencies.
Any comments, questions? For our finance.
Notifications to them to try to collect, or is that just because they just.
I I think this is part of that notification process. And and do we have an updated amount on that plan or still the?
It's, we we will not have an updated amount until.
They go.
Okay.
Well, I think that it still speaks very highly of our town's tax collector for the fact that. There's only twenty two properties in the town of Elon that are delinquent on their taxes.
So proving this, you're giving us the ability to go ahead and advertise this tax lien notice. And I, and I believe it, it lists the properties involved.
This is just the town taxes, not the county taxes that they.
He does their own, right?
This is a work session. This will come up at the next meeting.
And that's when we'll have a final number for you. Um, you know, there might be some interest accrual on there, somebody might have come in and paid or.
And even even when you get your packet, we will update it prior to the meeting, but like at five o'clock, so.
Is that something we can move to the consent agenda? Or.
Well, I I would ask for a vote on it, just.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree.
I think that's good.
To highlight it in case anybody happens to be paying attention out there, uh, rather than just having it all done in the gal.
Okay. All right, we'll move that to our regular agenda for our next meeting. Next on the list is our ten year tax release for the year of two thousand eleven.
Uh, these are long past collectible taxes. My guess is, and I don't, I haven't looked through them, but my guess is most of them are probably personal property taxes rather than real property taxes. Because my my assumption of this real property, we probably would have foreclosed. So this is probably based more on personal property tax values. Last year, we did eight accounts, about for about six hundred dollars. Currently, so this year, uh, we're at a thousand dollar, thousand dollars for nine accounts. And and under state statute, there's a limit as to how far back we can go and collect regardless. He's now uncollectible.
Any?
Personal taxes can also be mobile homes.
I mean, the tax amount on some of these is very low.
Yeah, they're ten dollars.
Yeah, they're very low.
Well, there's one for less than six.
I'm just grateful that I'm not on the list.
Pay your taxes.
We don't say this out loud often, but we always check the list to make sure that you are on it. Or that you get an opportunity to get off the list, start advertising.
So the question, I, you know, obviously, if there were props, like we've had to destroy, demolish a property and we put a lien on that property.
Yeah.
Um, if if we didn't collect that, they didn't sell the property ten years from now, we no longer have that right to collect.
Lean is different. I mean, it's like a mechanic's lean that sits there until that property changes hands. But because, as I said, you know, it could have been a mobile home, for instance. You are mobile. Sometimes they go, they're, they go. There's no way we can go and 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 file a lien on it or take it possession by foreclosure. You're just not allowed to do that. So that debt could sit out there. You know, if a if a business closed, hadn't paid their personal property taxes. No way to collect that. There's no way to, you can't go confiscate the equipment, so.
They filed bankruptcy.
So some of these are are are, they're they're not collectible and they've sat there long enough that they're no longer have the option to try and collect.
Any other questions or comments?
We'll sort out that next time too.
All right, letter C revision to the town of Elon Water and Wastewater System Extension and Connection Policies.
I need to stand.
Good.
Do that, yeah. This is.
Thank you for coming. Thank you so much.
This issue. Resident that wanted to hook on to a sewer line that goes right by its house. But our policies sort of were counterintuitive to allowing that to happen. Whether it was because we require annexation for hookup. Or because um, we've had issues with unpaid sewer only, as you realize, the uh. Sewer sewer bills are paid by the amount of water used. Since we're not supplying the water, we could. So two, I think, one or two years ago, we did adopt a policy. That would allow us to do better at collecting, excuse me, on sewer only accounts. That that issue has been corrected.
Yeah, I I mean, we we've clarified that process.
So this would basically, the simplest way to do this was is to have somebody ask to annex. And then we say, no, you're not annexable, and so therefore, um, we can sell you sewer only service. It's a little convoluted, but.
So these are, the the where these have come up, then are, and they're our ETJ.
Yeah.
And the gentleman brought this to our attention. Is an area that the county actually provided sewer services two years ago. And then turned the sewer system over to Elon. It was not connected to our system at all, but just to just try to extract that Burlington. Well, because we had some issues with non-payment of sewer bills on sewer only. Prohibition on new sewer only connections. What's happened is that in the subdivision, there are vacant lots that can. What's happened is that in the subdivision, there are vacant lots that can no longer be built on because they can't, the sewer is there, but they can't tie into it. We, we talked about it and thought we. Might have overcorrected. So we wanted to bring it back to say, all right. The, the requirement is that they, they offer themselves, or currently the requirement is that they become annexed. Subdivision can't annex a single lot even if the property owner wants you to, losses has to be the whole subdivision. And we can't just go and annex a subdivision. So this allows for an individual to petition for annexation. Put that aside. For future. When others might start coming in and have similar issues of septic systems fail or whatever. Maybe we can at some point have that, the whole subdivision. Line to be annexed.
Creates a fair, a more fair situation within a neighborhood. Where the properties are all valued based on the fact that they have access to this public sewer and there's a vacant lot. Uh, or two that, that don't. So there's a, there's a bit of a disparate there and this really helps to balance that out.
Yeah, I think it puts it at a disadvantage right now because they may have neighbors that aren't connected, but. They want to. At some point down, they're going to have sewer problems. And like you said, there, there are the lots around that same street that, um, example, the neighbor called. He said, you know, he, his mother is an assistant living, so they need to sell the property. So the perception by a developer was, well, the property has no value because it has no sewer connection. So he's up against trying to sell property. With, without the ability to connect and it's going to help them, but also the neighbors who currently live there. So if they had to have sewer.
That option, yeah.
Then options there.
And, and the reason the county put in the sewer lines, the soils are lousy for septic. So they wanted to fix a problem of pollution, like searing it, so.
And there, there could be other future circumstances where property doesn't qualify to be annexed. But, um, is a logical customer for, uh, for water sewer. So. So it was a fairly simple change. Instead of saying that you have to be annexed. It's that you have to petition for annexation. And then we can, we can look at each individual request.
And, and we, two years ago, we included the criteria of how we would do sewer only. You know, we, we, we could shut, we have the ability to shut them off. That, that mechanism would be installed with, with the, the line currently. Any other sewer customer doesn't have that. Water cup customers do, we turn off the meter. But this, so we included that kind of language in the, in the policy. So that we had some, some backup for somebody who were not paid. So we could still enforce the ability to pay. This just allows us to let someone access their property.
It's odd that the county would put a sewer line without water. That's kind of odd.
Yeah, other than they were having water pollution problems, I think. We're getting a lot of failing septic systems, new ones couldn't be put in. So they came, in essence, they came to solve the problem in the neighborhood by putting in sewer.
Ultimately, in these situations, they, they have to come before us for a decision. So this isn't a staff's, this isn't a staff directed.
Anexation petition is.
You would certainly have to approve it based on the annexation aspect.
If it were to actual. The petition was actually going to come to us.
Yeah.
For annexation, but in this case, it's not inaccessible. Inex. Is that the word? Yeah. So.
I just wanted, I, I just didn't know if, if it, because I know that we were talking about some of these other issues about staff versus what we would do. So, okay.
I have one question. So. Is this among Walker Road? Is that where we're getting?
This one, no.
Spring Valley.
Oh, because we've had this come up. Do you all remember on Walker Road, the same thing? We have a water line that goes right in front of the neighborhood on the right.
Yeah.
Before you get to Forest Creek. And so, but let's say that.
We had a phone call about that today. So.
And that was interesting. That was a property owner that does not want. To connect to public water. And there was some question about whether, um, because our policy says that when, when water is reasonably close. And you have to, you have to hook it up. Whoever has an HJ property, it's not in our jurisdiction. So if we require annexation in order to connect, it's almost like an involuntarily.
You want the service, uh, well, they don't, uh. We've never really thought about people not wanting the service, I guess.
That's the, that's the.
They came to us for the service. Okay, but we need to annex you.
So they have a well? Where they can get water?
To build a well.
They would, they would go in a well. So they can lot right now.
And it could be because they don't want, it could be for financial reasons on their part. It could be for financial reasons that they don't want to be connected or that they don't want to be, um, subject to town taxes or annexation, whatever, whatever it is.
Circumstances are much different.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
We're having somebody who wants the service.
Does allow, if there was a situation where somebody wanted to hook up and there's a line there. We, this would allow us to just. Light is there.
Any other questions? Thank you. Before we move on to reports, Dr. Stein, did you have anything today? Love our company.
One's graduation.
May 20th.
Laura Kate's birthday.
I think we did that on purpose.
Can you all sing happy birthday in the middle of graduation for?
We're even doing it twice that day just for her.
All right, moving on to reports, town manager, finance director.
Hold you what's going on with finance director. We've got interviews this week for planning director. RFP is out for town attorney, Google Services. At some point, I have to go back and see what the closing date on those were early in May anyway. Suggest the, the board come up with a subcommittee to go through that and assist with interviews and the recommendations for the full board to consider.
That's fire for it.
We are still operating on an intro.
Are we reposting that?
I'm actually at a point where some of these other things are. Whited down, you know, I'm waiting for, for res applications on finance and getting ready to do interviews. What I, what I have. I've been given this lot of thought, what I'm going to do is, is go back to our interviewees and, and contact. Exactly and see if any interest there still.
Got it from you?
Music this Friday night.
Was it?
Bluegrass.
I said bluegrass, yes. Oh, you missed a great show last Friday night. Seventy plus people out there for. Tattoo.
Like there were more than that. I mean, there were like.
How can there be more than, more than 70?
Twenty children?
Because they can't, they can't go.
Children alone.
There, there were quite a few people there. And I, I stopped counting at 70 and people were still showing up, so. Great show, great weather, worked out perfectly.
Thank you again, Rich, for all your heavy lifting with the, uh, the budget. There was a lot of. That. Series of, you know, your, your hard work and, um, so thank you for that. At our first meeting today with Jill as our new downtown director, yeah, with the committee. That was with us as well, so. Enjoy that. Thank you for the lunch.
Don't expect dessert every time.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are leftover desserts up there. That's.
A lot of good.
Send it your way.
A lot of exciting things going on downtown and welcome Jill again. Glad to have you on board. That's all for me.
Clint. Yeah, I want to echo thanks, Rich, this, uh, budget. It's the first time working on the budget committee. Uh, you made it easy with all your multiple spreadsheets and giant spreadsheets. So it was very easily read.
That's why I did the slides.
Yes, yes. But I do appreciate you taking charge of that. Mr. Shaw, thanks for, for coming, staying for the whole meeting and showing interest, uh, in committees for us to be better as a town. We need to have volunteers and residents like yourself, but come here. And I think this, this shows as an example that we have residents here in Elon, so I appreciate it. Uh, Jill, thanks for the leftovers. I guess.
I didn't want you to not feel special, but I had to be honest about.
So not really leftovers.
Fair enough.
It's sealed.
I guess, Dr. Stein, if you can relay this to, uh, the university, uh, we appreciate them going in with the town to do the plaza. Um, I think that is something that is, uh, shows great partnership and I think it's going to benefit both of us as a town and, and the university together. Music Dacha was awesome. Emily, the, the mayor, she came and cleaned, Jill cleaned off the tables.
Jill cleaned the tables this week.
Emily came and put tablecloths down and had bubbles and chalk and all kinds of fun stuff for, for the kids. So, I mean, it's just a really cool family atmosphere. This, uh, the Dacha stuff is really catching on and I'm really digging what, what we're putting down. I like it.
Echo would already been shared. Appreciate the work on the budget. And I do appreciate the volunteers, Mr. Shaw and Ms. Scott coming out. I think it's a good testament if people want to get involved in our community. Most of us probably started the same way. We're going to involve our community and see what develops to. Yeah, I mean, that's something.
You'll be up here next.
That's something we have to encourage people. There's lots of opportunities to help. Town, our community better. And I hope more people will, will step up. I think, Mr. St, uh, Dr. Stein, don't we have a baseball tournament coming up in May?
We do.
You're hosting the CAA, aren't you?
Yes, we just hosted men's tennis this weekend.
Good turnout.
And we've got softball coming up within the next couple of weeks. And then baseball.
Do you have ladies tennis this weekend is coming up?
That's right. Yeah, because it was full. We went through those the other day, right? Four tournaments.
Just coming in so we get a chance to showcase our, our town.
Doing great with that. They did the women's basketball CAA too, just recently. It's fantastic.
Certainly appreciate the tax dollars that come with it.
I hope you'll choose sustainability. I, uh, I, I've been trying to work a little bit behind the scenes to try to get that, that committee, uh, mustard, get some folks to come, uh, coming out. I, not only because, you know, I was one of the ones that was here when we brought the resolution. We are, you know, really reigniting, of course, the pandemic, kind of the wind out of everybody's sails, but, uh, but the idea that this, especially just coming off of Earth Day, this is really important thing to do. Uh, and so I'm so glad that we have people like you that are qualified to be able to, to be, have, have a little bit more of an expert opinion than just the opinion. And, uh, that's really helpful. So, um, but I, I'm hoping that, uh, as we move forward, both the committees are going to get off the ground as soon as possible. They're both just, they are warm, warming my heart that that is something that this town wants to be a part of. So. And those are the ones that I've been supposed to be involved in and, uh, and I'm jealous. I need to get on the downtown, uh, group too. So. For a lot of different reasons. So, but anyway, that's pretty much all I have.
Stephanie. Exciting news. If you want to see Dr. Stein on TV, you can tune in. He's did such a great job. Uh, North Carolina PBS, the show is called North Carolina Weekend and the entire show was shot here in Elon, um, showcasing the inn at Elon and showcasing our downtown businesses. So the first, it will air premiere on May 5th at 9:00 PM on, uh, North Carolina Weekend on the NCPS again. It will re-air at least four times. So if you just go to their website, it lists, it's like 10:00 AM Friday morning. Or no, 5:00 PM Friday. I can send it out to everybody and then you guys can put it on the website if you want to, but, um, it's a half an hour show. It's seen throughout the state, parts of Virginia and parts of South Carolina. Um, so I think it's, it's going to be great. We, uh, had Deb, the host, um, hold up her, you know, um, Oak House coffee cup while she was talking and got her ice cream at Smitty's. And so I think that this is going to really hopefully add a lot for the university and, and for downtown merchants as well. So.
Who helped us to get them to come here?
Well, I used to work for them, so I made a few calls. For saying that.
Will you be hosting a viewing party?
Maybe we should have a viewing party at Turner.
We don't know how it turned out yet.
Well, I will make a call or two and see. You did a great job. I was listening the entire time, so. Soundbite, 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 yeah.
All right. Well, um, thank you all for the budget. I, um, kind of crashed your meeting at least once coming in here. I don't remember why, but I did. Um, and I could tell that it was a lot of work, so great job on that. Rich and I also had a meeting with, um, Mayor Williams from Gibsonville and another, uh, Mr. Thompson. Um, from Gibsonville, one of the aldermen there. To dis discuss, they were concerned that the decisions that were made around the new neighborhood may, um, damper our relationship with the town of Gibsonville. So we had a really good discussion about, you know, how we all want to work together, some projects that we saw that we could all benefit from. So I think it was a really good meeting. Um, and, you know, just looking forward to additional partnerships. We loved music to dine to. Um, I did realize that I put plastic tablecloths down on Earth Day, which broke my heart. I did that, but I did it. Um.
Did you throw them away? You're going to use them.
They were all destroyed by the children. Um, there was food all over them, chalk all over them, all kinds of stuff, unfortunately. Um, but I'll get some reusable ones that we can wipe down and not toss. Um, so I'm, I'm excited about the NC weekend thing. So that's exciting. I've also noticed that it just seems like there's always parents in town, Dr. Stein. So I love it. I don't know what you all are doing different, but I've talked to business owners, they love it. Um, I love to see it. So keep it up. Keep those parents coming to town.
It's a big month for admissions decisions. So a lot of admitted students weekends before.
I can, I can tell you that as the unofficial, uh, TIAA admissions coordinator, there are several of my colleagues' children coming to Elon. I'm going to have my own club of baby centers.
Do you want to have a solicited hashtag? Like, do you have a hashtag you share with people when you're? People work, you, you know, for social media purposes, like is there like? Hashtag Elon right now is trending.
Yeah.
A lot of times they're broken up. I know like hashtag Elon calm or something like that. They're broken up. I don't, I shouldn't know, but.
This would be neat to work together in something. So like, when we do have parents coming to town, that's social media. They're tagging and it also brings up the town. So then we can also share with our people, um, the same hashtags. So we can get a collective look of the town. Seeing the town from a visitor's eyes is definitely a whole lot different than me going downtown and seeing it. Right? Because, I mean, oh, it's just the Oak House. But when you look at it, parents love that mess.
And I talked today about maybe trying to get back to summer concert. And I talked today about maybe trying to get back to summer concert on campus that was with the town. We haven't done that before, so.
And Elon has been hosting like drive-in movies. On Saturday, there was like a drive-in movie concept.
Once in a while.
For us, but.
Yeah, once in a while. And I'm trying to remember, have you ever attended any?
I have not. I saw it was happening.
Yeah.
Was it down at Char?
No.
No, last year.
Hard to do a.
Phoenix Drive, be down to the parking lot behind the inn at Elon and then you come back toward Packard.
So behind the colonnades there.
Yeah. It's like between the new parking lot there at the Elon Elementary property and then the parking lot behind.
Because there was some difficulty in terms of lighting or trees or something that you couldn't see the movie well at Char. And probably bug the neighbors behind, well, I don't know, a lot of lights around there. So, so they do that every once in a while.
Yeah, several years ago. I think that university approached Phyllis about doing it and there was some issue. Yes, Diane.
I mean, I don't know if you want to mention that the sign is on the building. And we're going to invite Mayor Collie to the May 10th meeting to make a presentation. I've reached out to him, but I haven't got a response. And the other thing about public service appreciation. At the Mays meeting, the individual, the staff member that's receiving their milestone gift. Their presentation would be made at that meeting, but then he also suggested for Public Service Week on the 13th, we would have a banquet, but like a cookout type thing for the staff and.
A luncheon, right?
I just want.
Friday, the 13th of May. If you can join.
At noon?
Yes, we will have it at noon.
Thank you for that because I forgot to bring that.
Probably out of Beth Schmidt would be the idea.
We'll get it all on that, but I just wanted to put it in the atmosphere.
Yeah. And just really quick for historical perspective, previous to the pandemic, we would have service awards luncheon in the Veterans Day, Veterans Day. And now we have, the town has Veterans Day off. And then, of course, the pandemic happened. So I really enjoyed attending you and you attended those. Did you ever attend one? Yeah. It was just nice to attend, to get to see all the staff together in one place and then individuals that were receiving awards would typically have their families there as well. And then during the pandemic, we just had them come here. And I think that it's great to have that public recognition during a public meeting. But I think that it's also great to have that luncheon and that kind of bringing everyone together. So we're going to kind of split it up this year and see how that goes. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. You can adjourn.